Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four. And with us today, we have Don Schwenker, and then Flegel, myself, are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor, Bjorn is county IT director. Luann is our executive assistant. And Mary is here with the medium. Newspaper, I should say, I'm gonna need your order. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. So really just have one item here. It's the Class D residential as entrance for Dave Ireland. Side distance is fine. It's gonna require eight to one four slopes because of the ADT on the road, so recommend approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the intern's permit for David Ireland as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's one other thing I wanted to talk to you about or get your input on was so the five-year program, when do you want to have that? And at what time? I think last year we did it at a night meeting.
Yeah.
So.
It was very well attended.
So do we want to pick a date and a time so I can come a resolution and?
So we normally do it. I was thinking we normally did it in February, but that's not the case. We don't redo it March.
Well, you ain't gonna make it every work.
Well, I see.
We do it in February. February, but yes.
We also have.
So do you have something in?
But.
I'm sorry?
We also have our budget a little farther along than we do.
Yeah, so are you have something in mind?
What are you talking about? We've already made your decision.
Uh, so I, I would say, um, to me, I would say either March nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. Because we have to, we do have to post notice of a hearing and all that, so we got a little time involved. We gotta do a resolution next meeting, and then we have a certain timeframe. We gotta wait before the actual hearing. So next week is the, what, twenty-seventh? The earliest we could have it would be like the twelfth, but that'd be pushing it. I'd say the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, we potentially have Conservation Board and Economic Alliance that night.
Yeah, and I'll be in San Antonio that night.
San Antonio?
Yeah, you can have it there.
Yeah, that'd be nice. And I know ISAC is the, we know the twelfth too, so I didn't think that would be good.
And I have several, I have, that's the, uh, Water Management Authority.
You can do it. You don't have to do it on a Tuesday.
Couldn't we do a Thursday, like the fourteenth? Or no, we're gone the fourteenth.
Yeah, what about the twenty-first?
Still gone.
Still gone.
I'm going that week.
That isn't the twenty, no, that's not, is that the twenty-first is the state meeting or that's?
No, the week before.
But ISAC is the thirteen through the fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, then I guess we're gonna have to go with the.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, we have Board of Health. We had the Board of Health that night.
Alright.
At seven o'clock. That Thursday, there's nothing going on, the twenty-eighth. The day it's a month. March.
I don't know if the Board of Health meeting would complicate anything.
Oh, yeah.
What'd you say was the nineteenth? You had a couple of other meetings going on.
Don's done.
Oh, Don's done. So, yeah, we can't do it by the week of the twelfth or the eleventh, and we'll do it the week of the twenty-fifth. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
So I'm here in March twenty-eighth?
Um, that's a Thursday. Is that getting far gone?
Because you said Tuesday was busy, right? Tuesday night?
I have a Board of Health.
So, well, you can do it. So I just have to have it into this.
If you guys want to have it on the nineteenth, I can just watch it afterwards, or you know, you'll put it on Zoom, will you? Or you'll record it?
They, yeah, I just have to have it recorded to the DOT.
This is, it's the plan, and if somebody wants to argue about it, so be it.
Right, and I don't see this one as being as contentious. Last year, it was well attended because of the three oh eight.
You don't know that.
That's true.
No, but still.
Last year it was well attended because of three oh eight. In the past, there's, you know, five, ten, fifteen people. Um, the only big changes I see coming is swapping to the bridges and a few things like that, correct?
Well, I would guess we're gonna have some input about our refund.
Oh, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so like, I don't know if you guys heard, but I have to have the five-year program and budget submitted to the DOT by April fifteenth. So the twenty-eighth gives, still gives me plenty of time.
That's up to you.
If you want to have it the week of the nineteenth, go for it. I can watch it afterwards. If you want to do it the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth, go for it. I don't, I'm just saying. It's one of those things, if I can, if I can zoom in that night, I will. If not, I'll watch it. I'll watch you record it.
The twenty eighth is fine with me.
Very.
Okay, and then we have it at six?
March twenty-eighth at six P M. Here?
Go. In the ten K? We can do it here.
The ten K in here.
Plus, we got the audiovisual setup together. We build.
Yeah, run that then.
Well, I, somebody mentioned years past, you had it like at Makoka to.
We had it at City Hall once.
City Hall, but you want to have it here, correct?
It does not matter to me either way.
I think they tried having it in City Hall. I know they tried. They did it at Pearson. It was horrible.
We did have it at City Hall one year.
Did you?
Yeah.
I know Pearson one didn't work. It was echoey and horrific, and the microphone was like forty feet away, and nobody could hear nothing.
There was nobody there, not a soul.
We did it in City Hall for years and years, but then with COVID, they wouldn't let us in, so we had to find an alternate.
Let's do it here at courthouse.
Sure. And I have it in as we had it at seven before.
That's pretty late. I mean, I'm in bed by eight thirty, you know? So I'm not joking either. Nine o'clock, lights out.
I have it at both. I have. Just a clock is fine.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay. No, you can do it at seven. I mean, I'll bet take it now, midnight.
Six is good.
The only way I'll go too bad early in this whole time.
Just saying.
Nine thirty, it's like, you work much.
I mean, we usually get the rural community, but after they got chores done, I suppose I'd be here by six. I don't know. Maybe they can, maybe they can't.
There'll be a cabin season. You can get them anyhow.
Yeah.
Always brings you, they'll probably be in the field.
Me. Next couple of weeks, it's gonna be.
That's actually on the twenty-eighth of March. It's getting late now, the other day would be.
Okay, so the twenty-eighth at six o'clock here.
Word. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm cool with it.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I got.
I'm gonna run out there and check out the, the smelk creek. I'll be back.
Okay.
Take your camera.
Hopefully by ten o'clock, right?
Take your camera.
Well, I don't know if we can move it. Does, uh, because we, we can't move it to ten o'clock. I have a Canadian Pacific Ramo guy in here till ten thirty. Is it, or we are, is he coming? Or is he zooming in, or, or they, I guess?
No, it's just a discussion amongst us.
Okay, then, sure. Get back as soon as you can.
Because we're gonna do the.
Snow, it gone yet?
Snowpens first. Yeah.
Good.
And then, I guess it don't matter. I'll be back at ten.
Alright.
Thank you, camera.
No speeding.
Alright.
I'll be clear.
Getting back here. We, uh, any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to approach the board? Not seeing or hearing any, we will move on to Brianna Kirk, our Jackson County Veterans and Fair Administrator. Good morning.
Morning, guys.
Girls?
Girls, ladies, gentlemen.
Oh, sounds like you're a little bit hoarse.
I don't feel the greatest today.
Stay over there.
I know, right?
Slick on everything. Thank you.
Alright, just a quick update for you guys. Um, in the month of January, we filed a total of twenty-five claims. Eleven of those were newer supplemental D I C healthcare or burial claims. Fourteen were either supporting documentation, requested information, or intent to files. We had twelve claims that were decided, so that leaves one hundred and fifteen open claims for Jackson County. The most recent numbers we have are from the month of December. So there were three hundred and ninety-four Jackson County families received a total of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars in compensation, pension, or D I C benefits. This is an overall increase of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars since November of twenty-three.
Is that normal? Sounds like a lot.
It's a lot. It's good.
Well done.
Thanks, thanks. We got a good team. Alright, um, so our office was recently informed that there are about ninety-six thousand post-Vietnam veterans that paid into what's called the Veterans Educational Assistance Program, or V. And they may be entitled to a refund. So the V only has contact information for about twenty-five percent of them. So if, um, veterans who are eligible would have entered into active duty between January first of nineteen seventy-seven to June thirtieth of nineteen eighty-five. And they would have had to have contributed to the V program while on active duty. Um, they must also not have been dishonorably discharged, and they would have had to complete their full term of service. So there is a number, um, that veterans are supposed to call to see if they are eligible for a refund, or if they participated in V. Um, that number is one, eight, 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 four, four, two, four, five, five, one. And if they are eligible, our office can help them fill out the required forms.
Okay, so they can call your office if they didn't get that number also?
Yep.
And is there any other kind of, um, notice that they will get?
I don't think so, because they don't have contact information for all of them, so they just don't.
Is that, is that said that you were gonna go and KMAQ and tell them all about this, or?
Oh, I probably could.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I guess there's a, there's a timeframe there. Of course, I know when they were.
Why do they have to have those filed by?
They didn't say. But I think they're just trying to reach out to.
What's the next up for us on Just Talk Two?
Me, do we do that the third Wednesday or second Wednesday?
Do it bound.
Usually, second.
Second, so March could be the thirteenth. Yeah, I should, over here, I can.
Okay.
Here's his picture for the thirteenth of March, so we have to put somebody else in there. Remove yours.
Well, sure, you can take it up. I will sacrifice.
Let's be, never, never done it before.
No, I think it's just.
What services you offer, you.
Yeah. If you want to take it, it actually would be a good way to kind of get the word out to a lot of the people that maybe aren't utilizing your services that would be eligible.
Okay.
Because, uh, they do have that kind of demographic, or they support that demographic.
Okay, so that's the thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
At what time?
Take that.
At nine.
Nine A M.
I am. And you can have your own little personal or other items that you may want to do.
Talk about, talk about.
Okay.
Kind of a list of things that you guys can offer.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be good. You might find it to be a regular thing.
Maybe, we might really enjoy radio, I don't know.
I wouldn't go that far. The time does go quick, Brianna.
Just schedule Brianna in my spot.
Alright, let them know, yeah.
Just move them back.
Alright.
Cool, thanks.
That sounds good.
Is that it?
That is all.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, and, uh, again, them are, them are nice numbers to look over. I really, uh, see the amount of funding that's coming into the county in a monthly, I guess.
Yeah. It's good stuff.
That's a good number.
Alrighty. Don't care if like we, like, or if you want to type something up, maybe that we could like even share out there on Facebook.
Yeah, I can put something on our Facebook page too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then maybe on the website.
That's pretty sure. If you want to, type something.
Okay.
Something up on that.
For sure.
I think it would be good, the more we did it out there, the different.
That was awesome. Vitamin C.
I'll try. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next on our agenda is lawyer role here, Jackson County's only administrator. Good morning.
Hi, guys. Guys, Nan included, guys.
Okay, we're good.
It's a phrase.
It's just a phrase. It works for me.
Don't call me a man, though.
No, ma'am.
No way.
Uh, okay, so I'm here, one of the things I'm here to do is ask for an extension of the moratorium that's on Wind Energy, currently on Wind Energy. Uh, it went in place March, May thirty-first, so it's gonna expire at the end of this month.
Good.
It was a nine-month moratorium. Did you guys get a copy of of that? Do you guys have a copy of what's being presented?
The wind ordinance?
I have.
The moratorium.
We just got a new comprehensive plan copy.
No, uh. I, I dropped the ball. I was thinking that there'd be a copy here of, is there a chance that I could get that from Shelley?
What are you talking about? The resolution?
The resolution that we're working on.
So you didn't get a copy of the resolution?
Well, I called when lately?
Yeah, like, yes, after yesterday.
No.
After we finalized the.
We called. Is this for?
From your offer to a permit?
For the extension.
extension. Do we need to put a date on it? Or can we just present it when we're done, and we have an ordinance?
I suppose we could. I don't know. I.
That, that, that was one of the.
A permanent, a permanent.
Well, just, we just put a moratorium on it until we establish an ordinance.
Okay. I'm, I'm cool with that. We can rewrite it and get it.
I've just seen a lot of this kind of stuff come away. We didn't get it quite done.
Well, yeah, and I have this one extended out till May, or excuse me, August thirty-first. And the only reason I have that long of a date on it, we're hoping that the commission will be able to finish it off next month, so that would be March. And then ask for recommendation by, by you, but also, we're talking public hearings. So we, we have the, the ten and twenty publication dates on the public hearings. And, uh, we have the ten and twenty publication dates on the public hearings. And we, our commission's gonna, I already know they're gonna ask, they're gonna encourage you guys to do all three readings.
Good.
So that's gonna drag it out probably till I don't know.
Do all three readings on the same day, or?
I think actually they would, would like to see you schedule them out.
Okay.
But that's, you know, it's a recommendation.
So they don't want to waive second, third reading? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm he- hearing from them.
That gives, I know that gives, usually, um, uncontroversial things. It's probably better that way, that way, as it gets out in the press, people know they have
Another time to come in.
Come in and talk, but I guess my only comment are you wanting this approved today?
Well, if Mike wants to, uh, change the, the, I mean, if you want to change the date to open-ended, Don, we can.
I think you need to have.
Need a timeframe in there, whether you need more time or not. I don't like an open-ended. I want either worked on and completed. Or, you know, if you want.
Working if you open-ended, I think it's easy to push off.
We are not gonna do that.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Six months, so you're doing six months at this time.
And, and the only reason I'm doing is just in case something happens that you guys are like wanting to send it back to the commission for some reworking of just I've, I've learned that things aren't always as easy.
Say it's as simple, whatever timeframe you think you need, if you want to pass this resolution with an amendment to the date.
Yes.
I think there should be a date in there, whether it be August, September, October. Let's go October thirty-first then.
Oh, we shouldn't have that issue.
Well.
But if you guys, whatever you guys want.
That's better than open-ended. Otherwise, you're talking.
Right now, we have August thirty-first here.
I see that.
Yeah.
Is that gonna give you enough time?
I believe so.
Not, I guess you come back.
I thought it was very.
At that point, you come back and fix it.
I, I was worried that it was way too long. I mean, I know it's gonna be too long, but I wanted to err on the side of caution.
Well, there's no need to rush into it either.
Oh, we're not.
A motion to approve resolution ten seventeen oh two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty-four to extend moratorium for Wind Energy to August thirty-third, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that.
Motion second to approve resolution as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, other Matt, I should be, uh, coming to you in the next two weeks with Laura from ECIA for ECIA's update to the board on the, uh, comprehensive plan.
Good.
What she presented to the, uh, commission last night.
I seen it come through. I haven't highlighted. I have not read it.
Okay, well, that's okay. There's, there's.
There's a lot of information in there, though, and it looked very, you know.
Hundreds of pages. Yeah, hundreds of pages. We're gonna be, I bet we're gonna have a two hundred-plus-page plane before we're done. So, but anyway, and I have heard from Leisure Lake that new word is out there that I have resigned from my position. And I'm here to say I'm not.
You told them before you told us.
I'm not going anywhere. Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna ask you, okay, with winter being the way that it is, um, are we in the process of kicking back up because they can't argue that snow is making it harder to clean?
We, uh.
With the weeks of fifty, sixty-degree weather and
Yeah.
dry and.
Yeah, we sent, uh, we didn't have to. However, we sent a courtesy letter out to Leisure Lake. I think there was like twelve of them that went out into group one stating we March first, you'll be getting your legal notice if there, uh, if abatement hasn't occurred. Uh, I have talked to the county attorney's office, and we are working on, uh, a binding agreement. Also, kind of like the line in the sand. Uh, which
Well, he runs out of here.
Yes, absolutely. May first is a year.
So have you had also contact with the association as far as them pursuing?
They.
Individuals?
They are working on, they're working on it too.
To help, even help individuals?
Well, I, I don't know that that's happening.
Being a benefit somehow, if they could have a group that's capable or willing to help
Right.
in some way, I guess that's up to the association, but I can see that being beneficial for those that don't have ability or assets to certain equipment or whatever it may be.
I, I agree with that statement. Uh, I agree, it would be beneficial, however, not everybody gets along with everybody and, uh.
I hear you.
And, you know, they might be willing to help certain, certain people weren't willing to help certain people, but not everybody. Uh, I mean, we found that out with one of the cases that went to court last fall. Uh, where it had been like that, and everyone's like, well, we'll help out, but then when I talked to him about it, it's like, oh, well, no.
Well, you do try.
Yeah.
We'll move forward.
So, but anyway. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Oh, I grew up through Green Island.
Did you?
It just seems like it looks nicer. I, I, I'm just saying, I don't know.
Was there a trophy this summer?
Oh, no. But so, I don't know if those lawyers or whatever, but, uh, I'm just saying, it looked like some things that happened over there, so.
Good.
Don't look that shot. I was just like.
I was out there last week. Yeah.
Do you think I'm just? Where, did you see any improvement, or?
No.
Right. Maybe I just have my rose-colored glasses on.
Oh. Uh, no, a matter of fact, it's on our board. Earth and I are going out there, uh. The goal was today, but I, I highly doubt it'll be today. I probably, it'll be moved to tomorrow to get everything, uh, documented, because we will be sending out the, the court notices on those on March first.
Good.
Okay. But I'm glad you went out there, Don. That's awesome. That's awesome. Alright.
Or seventy-fifth down that way, right?
Yep, it's right out there.
Just cross the road, keep on going. Yep.
Alright, but thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Alright, then, Lisa? Smith, our auditor.
Yep. Well, this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and the Department of Publicity and the official newspapers.
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings, and written by Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second. Motion second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-three meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Need a motion to approve the renewal of a special Class C retail alcohol license without your service to Codfish Hollow Barnstormers LLC at fifty thirteen, two hundred and eighty-eighth Avenue, Makoka, effective March sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve the Class C retail alcohol looking license with outdoor service to Codfish Hollow Barnstormers. Barn, Barnstormers, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye opposed? And I did see a notice in the T H that they have a rather large or big country fan or music performer coming July fourth, maybe? Just a promotion there.
Hmm. I don't know. Um, since we did have our demonstration last Thursday with Neapolitan Labs concerning our website, it is, I think, the opinion of all department heads and you as board supervisors to move forward with the development, the website development. So if you're in agreement, I need a motion to approve and authorize IT Director Bjorn Beck signing the proposal for Neapolitan Labs for website development, including the access restricted employee portal in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to approve authorization, IT Bjorn Beck signature and proposal for the Neapolitan Labs uh, website development? Any further discussion? I mean, I think you had a good turnout for department heads, um, and it was a nice presentation and very informational and looked to be very usually friendly, and that's what we want is for the public to, um, have access to what they need.
I agree.
All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Shelley was sick last week, so the notice to the paper did not get done. Um, so I'm asking today for a motion to approve setting a public hearing date for fiscal year and budget amendment on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four at ten A M.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second to set a public hearing date for fiscal year budget amendment on March twelfth of twenty-four at ten A M. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Well, then I have to the board to do.
That's for a budget amendment for this year's budget.
Correct.
Sure.
And what is the timeline on setting the public hearings and all that for next year's budget? Where do we follow?
After today's meeting, Shelley's gonna come over. I have her coming over with a timeframe. Possible, proposed, as the budget sits right now, what the tax rate would be. And we can discuss that after the meeting in a work session.
Does it have to be done by?
We're really getting down to crunch time, March fifth. That's when we really need to have budgets done, and we need to start the process.
It has to be by the thirty-first of March.
April.
April.
But we also have the two mailings. We also have the one mailing that we need to do and the two public hearings. So we need to kind of talk about how things are gonna fall.
So. My question is, could you put it in? One notice here? Or do you gotta do two separate notices?
Actually, the, they have to be two separate meetings. They have to be two separate public hearings. The first public hearing cannot be held like at ten o'clock during your board meeting. It has to be set at a special time and a special day. It can't be the same time as a regular scheduled board meeting. You can, you can.
End our meeting at ten o'clock and have the public hearing at ten thirty.
Well, yes, if you want, or, or put a little more time in between, but you cannot have it during your regular scheduled board meeting. So it has to be a meeting on its own.
Right.
But we have to set that by the fifth.
Well, that's why we're having Shelley come in with her schedule, so we get things laid out, so we kind of know when everything is.
We will discuss.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for this week. Uh, tonight at five o'clock, it's a Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville for any of you that wish to attend that. Thursday, February twenty-second, at nine A M, uh, there was an R P A meeting scheduled, but that was canceled. So I just turned around and put in a suggested budget work session for that day at nine o'clock, until whenever you want to work on that. Um, at noon that day is a Bellevue Leadership Committee meeting by Zoom for Mike. Friday, February twenty-third at ten A M is a D H E C meeting in Dewitt or Zoom, um, or by Zoom for Mike. Monday, February twenty-sixth at one P M is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Full Board Meeting in Burlington. We're done. At three P M that day is a Regional Governing Board meeting, um, in Davenport for Jack and Nin, or Nin. At four P M that afternoon is Early Childhood Iowa Council meeting in Dewitt for Nin. And at six. And at six P M that night is a Board of Adjustment meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh at nine A M. And that morning at, when the meeting is done at eleven forty, we'll have a, a work session on a personnel matter. And then at two P M that afternoon will be Mississippi Valley Workforce C E O meeting by Zoom for Don.
I have a safety meeting today also, at four thirty every.
Okay. Um, my business today involves appointments, uh, reappointments, exact, to be exact. Um, first reappointments will be to the Veterans Affairs Commission, I think you have the listing in front of you of the current commission. There are two terms expiring um, for Stephen Norpel and Dorothy Wistad. Um, both of them have agreed to be reappointed. The board is gender balanced, so I'm looking for motion to reappoint the two of them to new three-year terms that would expire in June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Well.
Okay.
Motion in a second to reappoint Veterans Affairs Commission Stephen Norpel and Dorothy Wistad as presented for term expiring six thirty of twenty-seven. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
All right, then I am looking for a reappointment for the Jackson County Lead Commissioner. Um, currently held by um, Jeannie Collins-Hare, and I'm being to get her, I'm wishing to have her reappointed as the lead commissioner for another year for a term expiring February twenty eighth, twenty of twenty-five.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second to reappoint uh, Jackson County Lead Commissioner uh, to expire on two twenty-eight of twenty-five to Jeannie Collins-Hare as presented, all those in favor say aye. Uh, aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all I had for business, and like I said, um, but Don said, he said that John and Jeremy are not coming in today, so.
I talked to, I just stopped by to see how things are going, um. And he said, as far as the uh, Together We Build building, um, they were hoping, I know last time they heard, they talked about having the occupancy rating inspection on the twenty-first, but they're going to try, they had some, a little bit of delays with some pictures for the plumbers and stuff, so they're pushing that back till probably Monday, um, and getting a few more things tidied up. Um, the jail seems to be going along fairly well, it's just um, status quo, they're just trying to uh, get some things situated, and again, some fixture, kinda more tidying things up. Uh, the upper mezzanine should be done and painted, so they're hoping to get the stairwell in, um, but later this week, early next week. Um, a lot of the uh, Together We Build, once that inspection goes, they're gonna get a lot of the ceiling tiles and stuff out of that shed. So we can uh, if we wanted to start, he said they would probably have space in the warehouse, that if we wanted to start going through and separating out the B five player stuff, um, he would maybe have some space in the in the shed to do that, so. Together We Build has their ceiling tiles in there, they have some drawers and different things, and that stuff should all be coming out of here pretty quick, so.
That'll be good.
Basically.
We can start moving that stuff out of there, I know that's gonna take time. And uh, nice to set it up and look at it, yeah. Well, that's a, that's a good news, I guess, as long as we're progressing and things are coming along.
I think they announced initially, they were talking about having their first event at Together We Build was the Cowcalf Clinic, and I think that's been moved. Um, and so there is an event a week from.
It'll be on Wednesday.
Tomorrow is still, that would be the first scheduled event to be in there. And Jeremy says it, it might be tight, but he still thinks it should be okay, they're just trying to.
So they moved the Cowcalf event, though, they moved it, they didn't move the date, they moved the location.
Moved the location.
Okay, so we're still expecting till we maybe open the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
And they'll set a grand opening date, I suppose?
They'll do a ribbon cutting date, they're looking at more into June for that kind of official ribbon, ribbon cutting and.
Okay.
Stuff like that, but yeah, after we get all the leases and all that done, then they'll be looking at rentals and stuff like that, so if people are interested in renting, they need to call the fairgrounds and.
Good for them, I know they had a list of potential people wanting to come and look at it, so. It's encouraging that it could hit the ground running, and just, I don't wanna jump the gun. The, the trouble they had with the epoxy flooring and stuff kinda set them back a little bit, and so it seems like they, I they're scrambling a little, but there's just some unforeseen things that happen that kinda pushed it back, as with all construction projects, but.
Yeah, boring, guys, but they're like seven days a week trying to get all that.
They're thinking they're gonna be done here.
This week, by Friday.
Yeah, the next couple of days, the flooring will be done. Um, they can't put the ceiling tiles in until the inspection, because they gotta be able to see the wiring and all that kinda stuff, so. Um, he's, he's trying to finish it up, and so he's getting there.
Good news. Okay, um, so any other boards or commissions for reports, so we did have a waste starting meeting yesterday, and uh, revenue has really picked up for them in the last month, you know, uh, I suppose with the weather and whatnot. Being nicer, people can get out and do things and get clean stuff up, and so that's really picked up, the bad news is they are looking for a new driver. Um, so he has decided to move on, and uh, they're looking for another dri- our new driver for their trip to Moline, I think it's three times a day, so it's this kinda round trip, round trip, round trip, so. If you have anybody, you know of anybody that's interested, it's um, they are still working on the um, union negotiations with their rep, so.
Uh, Limes still blows our C D, had our meeting last week, um, everything's going good, there's several grants and things that they're working on, helping quite a few people in town, just still working out the nuances with the new director taking over and kinda getting all your accounts and certificate, certi- certifications, and Adobe authorizations, and that all kinda caught up to speed and transferred over. Um, but we kinda got through all that, and uh, she has quite a few things on, on the board that she's working on, so it'll be interesting to see how it progresses.
Huh? Did you, did you, did you tell?
Mine will lose, too.
Yes.
So.
Nice. All right, then, um, we have a couple of work sessions scheduled with the county engineer a little later. Other than that, I don't have anything. Is there any further business before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, leaving adjourn, thank you all.